Okay, it's 5:30. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody and thank you for coming this evening. As we start off, as you can see, there are some city licenses there for Simplex Grenell, Atalixah, and Libby's Boutique. And then next for appointments, we have two positions available on the Commission Board of Zoning and Appeals, and we have some applications there. I'd like to recommend that we appoint Barb Emmert and Brent Littleton to those positions. I'd make that a motion. I'll second. Okay, any discussion?
Are they both to the Board of Zoning Appeals or the Planning Commission?
Well, they're inside cities.
Inside.
So both? Okay. All right. It's been moved and seconded that we appoint Barb and Brent to the Planning Commission Board of Zoning Appeals inside the city. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next is the consent agenda. Questions on the consent agenda by commissioners?
I'd like to discuss item C briefly if we could.
Want to pull it off?
Yeah, please.
Item C. Emmert, you got anything?
No, that's fine.
Okay. So I'd entertain a motion then to approve items A, B, D, and E.
I'll second.
Is that a motion?
Oh, I move then, so moved.
Second. All those then in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Items for Commission action. Item C, consider an ordinance amending the boundary ordinances and establishing the legal boundaries for the City of Independence.
I just wasn't clear on what brought this about.
Statutory requirement, I think.
So this is something we do annually?
I think we're supposed to do it annually.
Okay, I don't remember seeing this before.
I don't either.
I tried to read it, but it's impossible to read.
It is.
But we're sure, somebody's sure that all this makes sense?
We have to trust our engineering firms.
Okay.
Trans Systems actually did that, and he's going to be at the meeting tonight, but he said he'd be a little bit late. If you want to table it to later and ask him any questions about the description, he just did the description, the actual ordinance the city attorney prepared.
Right. Okay. I've just never seen this before that I remember at least. But I don't know there's any point in discussing it with Sean.
Okay.
Just, all I would say is, are you sure this is right? And he'd say yes.
What he had to do is give the point locations that would establish the line for the city limit.
There he is.
Oh, there he is.
Speak of not the devil.
So Sean, I've never seen this before, this boundary ordinance. Were there some changes to it, or?
I believe it's every two years it's required to be registered with the county.
Okay.
And I think the city's been behind for a few years doing that.
Okay.
So our surveyor, Chief of Surveys, reviewed all the ordinances and all of the amendments since the last time the city did it and prepared this legal description that matched all that. And it's, yeah, it's quite lengthy.
Yes, it is. Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
So we're good. So we'd need a motion then to approve the ordinance amending previous boundary ordinances.
So moved.
I'll second.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor then signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we're ready for item F. Item F is consider resolutions providing for authorizing and providing for improvements included in a multi-year capital improvement plan and providing for the payment of costs thereof and substitute improvements to be financed with proceeds of the general obligation bond, Series 215-A, and any other related documents. Kelly?
This was to, so that we could use the leftover bond funds towards the Peter Pan project, and so that was the purpose of amending the CIP to include those and be able to capture those funds.
The capital improvement plan being included in here, that has nothing to do with the amendment. Did it have to be filed at this time, or what's the reason?
Yeah, you had to put your current one in there. That's why I was, and when I sent out the draft packet, that was one of the things I had a question on because I wasn't sure. And so we had to wait till we could get ahold of bond cancel, and they actually, Jennifer had sent this to him previously when this first started, and so he sent it back to me and said that's the one that needed to be included.
Okay. For action on any of the items or to issue a bond as it's outlined for any of the capital improvements, that would have to come back to the Commission.
To issue additional bonds, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, the way it's read is in the resolution, it reads that bonds can be issued for the capital improvement projects. But to do that, that comes back with another action. We haven't automatically approved.
No, it's basically those that are already issued and capturing the leftover.
Right.
Funds towards Peter Pan.
I had a question. I noticed the year on, the length of the bonds for street projects are, the bonds we got were 20-year bonds, and maybe, Sean, it seemed like in some of our previous discussions we talked about the life of a street is about seven to 10 years.
Yeah, that's a pretty commonly used term of life on an overlay. All cities are pretty good at stretching that a lot farther. So, and then concrete is typically much longer than that. Those are just pretty common lifecycle numbers, yes.
We're kind of locked in on these street projects with the bond being issued for that, but I thought if we're looking at a street, particularly, like you say, the overlay projects, it really doesn't make sense to bond an overlay project for 20 years when the life of it is seven to 10 years. Probably in the future, we might need to look at the length of our bond a little closer so that we're not still paying out money when it's time to replace it.
Yep.
Okay. Further questions or comments?
No good.
Okay. So I'd entertain a motion then for the mayor to sign the resolutions and any other related documents as prepared by law.
Is that a motion?
No. Yeah, that'd be a motion. Did you get it?
No, I'll second the motion.
Okay. Any further discussion then by commissioners?
No.
All those in favor signify then by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, item G, consider proclaiming April 4, 2017, as Mayor and County Recognition
Day for National Service.
Kathy Shepherd is here with RSVP, and they would also like a picture with the mayor.
Okay. Come on up, Kathy. You have a presentation, I'm assuming.
I do, but I have some volunteers here with me too. If they could just come.
Bring those out.
Here.
I just wanted to tell you a little bit about RSVP before this is signed. RSVP is a part of Senior Corps, and we are funded by the Corporation for National and Community Service. We have volunteers who work specifically with RSVP, and then we have volunteers who work at partner work stations. And some of those stations where people here in town work at are Community Access Center, Community Mission for Improved Housing, Duland Dix Post 1186 and their auxiliary, First Christian Church, Open Arms Dining, First United Methodist Church, Fish, Four County Mental Health, Harry Heinz Hospice, Independence Historical Museum and Art Center, the Independence Lions Club, Meals on Wheels, and the Southeast Kansas Blue Star Mothers. One of the things that I wanted to point out, the volunteers in this past year have given 15,358 hours of service. That's in 2016. If there was a dollar value assigned to that service even at minimum wage, that would be $111,346 worth of service. So I think that's really outstanding for these volunteers to be doing that. One of the other things that I'd like to point out is in the year of 2016, volunteers drove over 30,579 miles providing medical transportation for residents of the area. So I think that is really great that they do that. There are 5,657 hours with food pantry support, 90 hours garnering donations, 27 hours recruiting other volunteers, 321 hours distributing information, 38 hours preventing elder abuse, 430 hours providing companionship, 1,007 hours with food delivery, which would be Meals on Wheels, and 1,031 hours of transportation, 2,441 hours of community priorities, and 4,316 hours supporting our veterans and military members. So I'd just like to recognize these volunteers here, and I know, would like to ask for you all to proclaim April the 4th as Mayor and County Day of Recognition for National Service.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Those are impressive numbers.
Thank you.
You know, the 30,000 miles, that state reimbursement rate would be over 15,000 bucks as well.
Yes.
So that's, that could add on to the dollars that you were already talking about.
Oh, yes.
So, wow. Well, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Don't go sit down. We'll take a picture of everybody. We better prove this first.
Could we possibly get you in the picture?
Yeah.
And I would also like to invite you all to take part on April 4th. If you would like to shadow the volunteers on that day, and we have opportunities during the day and also in the evening. Open Arms Diner is April the 4th in the evening, and so I'd like to invite you all to join doing that. And I have a T-shirt for you if you decide to volunteer that day that you all can wear when you do it.
Is that legal for us to take a gift? I'm not sure.
That's a good question.
Just kidding.
We don't want to cause any problems.
Why don't we go ahead and approve the motion here, or approve the proclamation? So, would you, Gary, you want to make that, or?
Sure. I move that we proclaim April 4, 2017, as Mayor and County Recognition Day for National Service.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
With pride and joy. Thank you. And let's go get our T-shirts and let's get the picture taken here.
They said the mayor.
I know, I heard that.
I would love for all of you to be in it.
Can we all?
Yeah.
Let's have us all do this.
Yeah.
This is not just for the mayor here.
I have three different sizes there, so I would cover.
Sorry. We could get purple.
No. That's not fair.
Can we give it a thumbs up? Give it a thumbs up, everybody?
Are we good?
Yeah. Thanks, you guys, very much.
I apologize, we couldn't get a purple shirt.
Ooh. Thank you.
There's one of these signs, but I'll get it for almost a few individuals for that.
Ooh, 2X. That's one of the wonderful parts of being a commissioner, when you get to do things like that. Item H then is consider request from Art Turn to start work on the dog park on Park Street. I know there's several here, so.
I'm Ryan Goode with the Art Turn Initiative. If you guys recall, Art Turn is about getting the younger crowd more civically involved in the community. One of the big projects that we had a lot of feedback on was wanting the addition of a dog park. So we met in front of you guys almost a year ago to the date. We've been working hard, collecting money, planning, going through designs. With matching grants and donations, we have now reached the amount that we need to start the construction on the dog park. I'm going to let Michael go into a little more specifics with you guys on that.
How much is that?
That is 15,000.
15,000.
And we are still continuing our fundraising efforts thanks to Leadership Independence. We recently combined, and we are one now, we are now one big dog park group, so. Like Ryan was saying, $7,500 is coming from a matching grant. The rest has came through with donations and pledges, and we think we have enough pledges to go over the matching grant as well as to start Phases 3 and 4 with our continuing I am going to talk about actually the next few steps that we see if you guys approve. I guess I should start with some of the issues that we have found. Parking is an issue as well as maintenance. Maintenance was also an issue or concern. I guess it's only a concern if it's, if we have solutions for them. So, right now, there is a circle drive where the mobile homes used to be. We measured that out. It's roughly 160 feet. I went to the park and I measured the park distances of parking spots. Three parking spots are three spots, three, sorry, three parking spots are 30 foot. So from that estimate, we determined that there's at least 15 parking spots off into the grass and still enough room to do a, drive around in the circle. And that will allow enough parking for the busiest of days, and if there's overflow, we've talked to the rec center, and they are willing to adjust their dog policy or their animal policy to what the city's policy is, or if ours is stepped up from the city policy, which I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, is just have to be tagged and on a leash in public. So ours would probably be a little bit stepped up and have to have a leash, a dog park tag, and a city tag. And so 15 spots at the actual park, and then there's surrounding areas, so there's plenty of parking. But I know parking, that's just a temporary fix. You guys wanted us to have a kind of permanent base for parking, and with some of the laws or some of the codes, it states no soft parking, or it has to be a hard parking structure. So we're hoping that we can go through the Planning and Zoning Commission and see if we can get that also grandfathered in, as there is plenty of gravel kind of already spread out throughout that area to park there and be okay. Any questions on the parking there? Okay. The other issue that we had was the maintenance. Right now, the Cemetery and Park Group takes care of that, and talking to Barb Burskins and her talking to the other guys, the park, even though they're kind of reluctant, they said that's still their property and they would take care of it unless it's a busy rainy, rainy summer, and then they might need help. And so in that case, volunteers from the dark park every month or twice a month, depending on how fast the grass grows, will have to kind of pitch in and volunteer more hours and take care of labor and maintenance around them. But their main concern was just kind of edging and time it would take to edge around the fence, but I think between weed kill and kind of trenching around, we'll kind of get enough area so it's easy to do a riding mower around those areas. So if you guys approve us, we do have the help of Cornerstone Surveying. So if you guys do approve us in the next week, we'd like to talk to Rodneyson at Cornerstone Surveying and get the optimal fence line and any obstructions that he sees. We'll kind of map those out, and we'll get a simple plot going. The city inspector wanted to see a simple plot of the area so we can go ahead with the fence. And then after the fence, or after talking to Rodneyson, we would go to Woods, who has graciously offered equipment to help us dig posts and run the fence, and they said the turnaround time for fences, two weeks. So we'll have two weeks from the time that we talk to Cornerstone to wait to get the fence. We will have to call Dig Safe, which can be anytime in between those two weeks, as I believe Dig Safe is good for two weeks. The markings are good for two weeks. And through various city employees and utility employees, we've come up with, the utilities are cut off back at the street, all utilities, so utilities shouldn't really be a problem. And I talked to Tom Chisholm with TC Underground, and he's the one that actually buried the sewer line, and he said that will be a ways from the fence, and he said he buried that at least 10 feet underground, so that should not be an issue. We're not going anywhere close to 10 feet. And then after the water lines get ran, we have the help of Paul Lemon, which is plum crazy, to actually tie it into the city's meter and help kind of control that. And then after the simple plot, of course, we'll have the city inspector closely working together with us, and he's already approved that the fence is okay to be put on that ground, and it's up to, it's permitted by current city code. And then estimated, two weeks from the start time, we'll be able to start pouring concrete and get pads, which will also have to be talked, we have to be in connection with the city inspector to do that. He said he needs to know the dimensions and everything, what's planning on going on it. And most of the pads that we have are just walk areas or bench areas, so no structure will be on the concrete pad, so that shouldn't be a problem either. And then during that time, us volunteers, there's actually four groups in Leadership Independence. It's a volunteer group, a fundraising group, an advertising group, and an events group. So the volunteer group, as well as the dog park, will be cutting down trees after we fill out city waivers, of course, to do volunteer work, which is very common in the park. So Barb did not see a reason that we couldn't do the same since it is technically the park ground, or soon to be the park ground. And then we've also had Phil Groff with S E K Construction offer to grind the stumps down and kind of get some of those stumps out of the way. And then we've talked to TLC. There's a couple of gumball trees that are currently on the property. We are trying our best not to cut those down because those are two of the main central trees, and those will provide very substantial shade to that property. And so if we cut those down, we will lose a lot of shade, and we'll actually have to spend money on shade and not, it just won't be a luxury item. It will be a kind of a needed item. But there's a way to prevent them to reproduce with some spray. It'll be too late this year to apply that, but by wintertime, we'll be able to spray those, and the gumballs will stop dropping, and it'll be a safer park. Dogs won't be chewing on them. It'll be safer for the mowers and safer for the park goers that have to walk around, so that shouldn't be an issue after that. The last thing that we'll have to do, which will be three weeks out, is install the fence, and so it's two weeks for the turnaround and probably another week just to get enough people lined up to install the fence. And then our estimated completion date is five weeks from the start of talking to Mark Sin and ordering the fence, and that will complete Phase 1 and 2. Phase 3, which is more inside the park and agility training and stuff for the dogs, would just be after that, and we'll be progressing through fundraising efforts and kind of once we get the money. And then after the completion, we hope to have a big grand opening for the dog park, and I'm going to let Taryn talk about that more as she is knowledgeable.
Yeah, we have quite a few ideas for this event or grand opening of the dog park. We want to invite community members and of course their dogs to come and enjoy the day, the grand opening day, and we want to partner with AWOL also for this day to have it sort of as an adoption day as well, where they can bring out some of the dogs, and we can have like an adoption fair with this grand opening day. Some other ideas are to have food and homemade dog treats for sale, maybe a raffle for like a dog, something, some sort of pet accessory type of thing for, to raise money. And, let's see. We also want to invite local businesses, local vets, to set up tables at the event, or like grooming salons. They could offer nail trimming or tips on grooming, things like that, just to get, to let the community members learn about those certain types of things as well. We also want to possibly have multiple events with AWOL, maybe two or three adoption fairs a year type thing, so we want to really partner with AWOL with this too to support them and pet adoption. So, that's pretty.
So when are you planning the grand opening? What's your timeline? Sometime in April?
Sometime in April, hopefully, depending on park schedule and everything. We don't want to conflict with another event, but hopefully by the end of April, we will have another event. Also, I forgot to mention, Tim Haynes at the Fab Lab is part of the Dog Park Group, and he will be very key into helping with signage and, most importantly, a park rules board, Dog Park Rules Board, and that will just kind of lead to safer, safer pet care as well as a safer park. And as Taryn was saying, with the local vets and hopefully even the Vet Tech Program and ICC, the grooming places, we hope to have very safe pet care as well as a little bit of more money for the city, because most pet owners don't have a dog tag, and currently those are $3.50 maybe at the park, at the city. So we're hoping to encourage, I mean, it's a little bit more money for dog owners, but it's just being a responsible pet owner and being a responsible member of the dog park. We want to encourage a safe. We want to encourage a safe, a safe place for the dog park and, and be responsible for your, for your pet, which also leads into maintenance at the, at the dog park involving trash pickup and, dog extra, yeah. So. So we're hoping to encourage responsible, responsible pet care. And so this doesn't become a problem and you don't have to mess with other, other dogs' issues. So we're, we're having tools there as well as trash pickup bags with the receptacle, like, like in the cemetery already. So that will be included in this phase two. And we don't see a problem because it will be self policing. And if people aren't following the rules of the park, uh, the dog park, then, I mean, it's just kind of, you have to get onto it. It's self policing. So we don't see a, a real problem with that.
Did you mention that there was going to be a, a tag for the dogs for the dog park?
Yes, um, through the Fab Lab and, and with help from our members, we can actually make our own tag, which will say Dog Park Safe or something on it. And at this dog, at this opening event, we'll, we'll make sure these dogs have all their tag, or other shots with.
Required shots, um, rabies, parvo, and then that combo shot that has like four different things in one. Distemper, hepto, something. Those would obviously be required because that's stuff that's contagious. We don't want any dogs spreading anything. And I think our plan is that when you're at the vet and you're getting your yearly shots, you can just go ahead while you're there and get the Dog Park Safe tag. And it's kind of like when you go there, they give you the rabies tag. You can just get this one along with it. And that way, when you go to the dog park, there's no like concern. You don't need to bring your shot record with you every time. You've just got the tag. You're good to go.
So it's just to verify that the dog has been vaccinated, not like a membership? Or is that one of, somebody said, when you said dog safe, you meant shots, not, not a vicious dog?
That too. I mean, we would discourage and on the rules board, there's certain actions. But yeah, we don't want any dogs to, to ruin it for everybody. So, I mean, people will have to know, to know their dogs and how they play with other dogs to not abuse this. And if it becomes a problem, we'll have numbers on the, on the rules board as well as vets in case something does occur to kind of get this taken care of.
And I will say in that vein, I took my dog to a dog park in Lawrence about every day for a year while we lived there. And there certainly were the occasional person that didn't know their dog, was trying it out for the first time. Their dog was not a Dog Park dog, didn't play well with others. But you didn't see that person again after that one time. So people tend to realize things and make the best decision for their pets usually.
And the Dog Park tag is really for the owners. It's just a peace of mind. Because people might not want their dogs around a dog that they don't know if it's vaccinated or if it's, uh, there's no way to really control it except for self policing and following the rules board. But if these people are going to break laws, it's, I mean, they're probably going to break a, a rule too.
Could we look at that photo of the park again? Can we back up one? I know you've changed some of your design pretty significantly. Basically, we're just doing the fence at this point. You don't, you've gotten rid of the concrete columns there or the brick columns?
Correct. Uh, we are doing a black galvanized, um, black coated vinyl galvanized fence. It'll be five foot high and it'll be 1,200 linear feet.
You'll still have the double gate to get in?
Yep. Um, we'll still have a concrete pad, uh, one entry gate. And then two gates will be, one for the, small, one for the large dogs. And we kind of hope people will also follow that rule. Small dogs can play with the large dogs on the large dog side, but not vice versa. And just again, people will have to know their dogs and.
Right. And then is there another gate for the mower to get in?
Yes, there will be two maintenance gates, one on the southeast.
That's okay.
Yeah. And then one in the, in the back for, to get on each side. So yes.
And you mentioned water. So how do you, how do you handle the water usage at this facility?
We think it will be very minimal.
Is it just a hydrant?
Uh, two hydrants, yes, for now, with probably gravel underneath and a, a irrigation tile or pipe to, to kind of spread it throughout. Yeah.
Okay.
Fundraising, you guys, that first Friday you were talking about doing these little bottle caps. Do you mind?
Do you mind if someone that didn't sign up would talk for?
That's fine. Yeah.
I know we're taking a lot of your time, so I'll make it fast. Essentially what we're doing is we're asking the community to collect plastic lids off of water bottles or detergent cans or, or even if you're in the grocery store and you're buying new sour cream, those types of lids can all be collected. We will recycle them. And we've got some students who are working on a community service project. They will be recycled and then created, turned into park benches. If you would like a collection station for your business or your home, you can contact us and we'll get you a collection bin. Thank you.
And something that I do want to mention, um, this is, that, that part of the project is not a Dog Park official. It's not, it's not us. It has to be the, the kids. Through this ABC program, the kids are the only ones that are able to, to do this fundraiser through this program. So just, I, I wanted to reiterate that. And together, we are all helping the Dog Park-esque community. But it's, it's these kids from Green Bush that are, that are spearheading that, that program.
Other questions from commissioners?
No. Sounds great to me.
I think it's good. I applaud you for your efforts and a lot of work involved, huh? As you go through the process, isn't it?
Especially asking for money.
There you go. Yeah, especially, well, those little bottle caps, how many pounds did you say you had to have? 400? 400 pound? That's a lot. Okay. Are there questions? No, I don't, no, no questions. Okay. Entertaining motion then that we approve the, uh, R-Turn group here to start work on and gain permission to start work on their Dog Park project.
I make a motion that we authorize our turn to begin work on the Dog Park.
Second.
Okay, been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Good luck.
Thank you.
Get to work. It'd be exciting to see it. Come along.
Thanks much. Exciting.
Okay. Item I is to consider bids received for cemetery, for the cemetery more. Barb?
First, I want to just congratulate Michael and Ryan and all the, the members of the Dog Park. They've been working for a long time and we've been having lots of meetings. And I'm just really excited it's coming to this point. So I thank the R-Turn, uh, group for all their hard work. Okay, on the mowers. As you see, we got a lot of, um, of bids that came through. Um, I have it in a two-page form. The last page, um, what's really important with Jim at the cemetery is spindles on the, on the mower. And he wants cast iron spindles because if you don't have cast iron spindles, you hit something. And there's lots of things you can hit in the cemetery, lots of stones and stuff. And in the past, they, he just constantly replacing spindles. And so he's had good luck with cast iron spindles. So he, in our bid, we required that. So that last page, those are not cast iron spindles. So, um, I did say these didn't really meet specifications on the last page. The other ones, we, we went through here and through all of them, we recommend that we go with the, um, the bid from Sandbaggers Golf and Turf for the Hustler Super Z. Basically, Jim's got Hustlers other than one bad boy there. He's, uh, he, he likes them. They're low maintenance, a local dealer. You can go get parts. It doesn't take you very long. A lot of these are from out of town. And by the time we would go out of town for maintenance and take a lot longer for repair and to get it back in service. So, um, we did have three grasshoppers that were just a little bit cheaper. But we, with that, we still, um, it was like $18.25 cheaper with that. So we think we, it wouldn't take long to spend gas to go, um, to Coffeyville, Mound Ri, or Mound Ridge on those. So that's our recommendation.
Is this replacement more? Is this, is this a replacement for another more?
It is a replacement, but we're going to take the one that we're replacing and we're going to take it over to the park. It's, it's good enough condition to, to continue using it at the park.
Questions from? Nope.
No.
Looks great. Okay. So the recommended low bid is, or the recommended bid is the Sandbagger Golf and Turf bid of $10,165, correct?
Correct. And as in our budget, we had $20,000 for equipment and that's where it would come from.
Okay, entertaining motion then to approve the purchase of a more for the park.
I move that we approve the purchase of the Hustler Super Z for $10,165 from Sandbagger Golf and Turf.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, been moved and seconded that we approve the bid from Sandbaggers for $10,165. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item J, consider authorizing the purchase of servers and electronic si, uh, storage device for the police department videos.
Mayor, uh, as you're aware, we generate a lot of data. And as we become more and more strictly to data and not, no longer files, just in the police department, we're generating 2.5 to 3.0 terabytes of data a year. Along with the police department on the city side of the network, we also generate a lot of data. This data is also video, city me, city meetings, which are public records, pictures, housing inspection, grass and environmental pictures, just part of our daily operation in the city. So we create a lot of data, both video and pictures on a daily basis. Our network system, city side and police, is a virtualized system, which allows us to partition our servers into a number of small virtual servers that run multiple operations, both on the police and the city side. What I mean by that is we run our data storage, uh, Laserfish, both on the police and the city side. So our servers, even though they're one on city, one on police, serve multiple functions and through that partition and virtualizing. Our storage system is a SANs device, which we do have a SANs device that we purchased about three years ago, which SAN stands for Storage Area Network. We replicate our virtual systems and store on the SANs devices. Basically, that's like taking a picture and then storing it on the SANs device. We snap that shot. Uh, we keep between seven and 10 day snapshots on our servers. And then we go to the cloud, which gives us our three points of servers or backup. I.e., if we lose a server, uh, we can bring up another server and take a backup off of our SAN device. If we would have a major catastrophe, lose a server and a SAN, we can go to the cloud and obtain our backup and be back up in service in a fairly quick amount of time. We are here today asking for two servers and a SANs device. Why the SANs? As I said, we purchased our last one about two to three years ago and it is at the critical level. It is full. And the one that we will be purchasing will last about three to five years. And then we'll be purchasing another one. It's just as the storage and the data continues to grow. The new SAN device will allow us three to five years of growth. The servers, our current servers are three to four years old. They're older processors and they are also what we call, uh, I call it like copper. They're just Cat 5 cabled into the system. The new servers will be fiber. And what that will allow us is a faster processing of data and downloads of systems. And a good example is an officer's out with his body camera and his car video. And he may have several hours of videos. Well, he comes back in at the end of the day to do his reports. Without a fast system working, it could be hours downloading all that system as he's trying to do his reports and file all his claims. The faster fiber servers will allow us to process that data in a timely manner, saving us times. Fiber also allows us to replicate. We replicate 24/7 on the city and the police side. We're constantly replicating back to the SANs device and to the cloud. So I mean, those processors are working all of the time, keeping our system up to date and going. The servers also have plenty of storage space, which allows us three to five years. So I mean, we keep that amount of seven backups, pictures. We have that data in servers that we're backing up constantly. And these new servers will allow us that. We had budgeted out of capital for our SANs device and we're budgeting the servers out of our IT budget for the servers. We received two bids for quotes, uh, one from Galaxy. And I don't have that in front of me, but you have it. And then we went to CDWG and received the lower quote, which we, is the one we're recommending for the equipment.
There's a significant price difference there, David, is, and I, I know a little bit about what I'm reading here, but.
Yes.
It's comparing apples to apples.
Yes, and.
As far as the storage, the.
Yes, we did double verify that. It's the exact same equipment that Galaxy bid versus CDWG. In fact, uh, they recommended, when we were looking for somebody else, I mean, Galaxy recommended, if you want a good price and good equipment, uh, CDWG is the place to go. So I mean, they, you know, I mean, we went, looked, it's been a long time, but we do have an account with CDWG. And as Kelly and I spoke and Jerry, you know, that's good prices on equipment. We will be seeking quotes from them in the future as we go forward. We were very impressed by the quote. And CDWG wants the business, so.
What's the installation cost?
Installation is, will be, just be done under our IT contract at the city. So there should not be a cost to that by our IT people when they come on Wednesdays and putting it in through our, just our general maintenance that we get every week as we put it together.
Galaxy?
Galaxy does our IT work, yes, sir.
So with their, their contract, is it a lump sum a year?
Uh, we're under contract with them. It's per hour, what they do for us when they come on Wednesdays to do work. But, you know, IT is a growing thing. I mean, we are pretty much totally paperless at the city. Uh, they are on call. They don't have to, we don't have to use them a lot, but we do occasionally have to call them and work and get something fixed. It's amazing how they do that. You probably see it. Everything's done remotely pretty much. So occasionally we have to call them. They come in and fix something. But they do most of the maintenance and general work on. Usually it's Wednesdays they're here.
But it's still, if they're working on their contract hourly, then it still is a cost.
Yeah, it's a cost, but we're not adding to, we're not like saying come on a Thursday and a Friday and do it. We're going to try to do it all within when they're here, just along with the regular work that they're doing.
But how much will it cost to install it?
Uh, I would imagine it'll take him a couple of Wednesdays working on the project as he works on it. So, uh, be my guess. Some of that is as far as bringing it in and getting it up. It does its own as you start to build it and copy stuff back over from the other servers. So a lot of it's just installing it and getting the process going and then monitoring it. So there could be 16 hours maybe into it as he gets the things up and going.
Galaxy, their, their cost difference didn't include any installation, the 12,000 difference?
We talked about it from the start that, uh, it would be done under our regular work hours of putting the equipment in. And even whether they, we purchase it from them or we get it from another vendor.
Yeah, it says at the bottom, price does not include installation on the Galaxy proposal.
Yes.
But so if Galaxy is our IT go-to company, they're, they're okay with still servicing the equipment even though they're not selling it?
Yeah, we went, uh, Galaxy is an HP certified and equipment's all HP. That's the only thing that they asked is.
Okay.
That way, I mean, if you know, got a Dell or something else,
Right.
They would be able to service or do the service contracts.
Right. Certainly looks like they're identical.
Yes.
Okay. Questions, other questions?
Uh, how much do we budget for Galaxy's contract for two thousand seventeen?
Hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand.
And that, we just base that off of the move. That's why we feel we have room in there. About twenty-five thousand from Galaxy last year was related to the move and so we, that's in that hundred thousand. So that's why we feel we have a little room in there to pull this out for the servers.
Yeah, just makes sure, you know, I know it's under their contract, but it's still a cost that wasn't in
Yeah. I mean, it's definitely a, uh, Commissioner talked that Mike, Jen and I had and that we have going forward and that we made very clear with Galaxy that we're not gonna exceed our budget in the IT and, you know, even if we have to cut back some days as we get further into the year to stay within budget, that number was a strong number. Yeah, we definitely looked at that very seriously as we looked to see if we could take the money from there. And we will work hard to stay at that.
Yeah, it looks, you know, just with all the extra expenses of operational costs.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to cut somewhere.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
No more.
Yeah. One of the things that this will do though, we're spending extra time with Galaxy. They're having the maintenance, that backup program as it is, as it is now, we're not gonna incur that cost going forward because we'll have the room on the new server and the, uh,
Basically, yeah, basically
Storage device.
Yeah. Mike's saying is right now Jerry and the police department is having to call them and say, we're out of room. So they're manually having to come in on the clock, move data up into the cloud and trying to free room while we're out of space. And, uh, so going forward with this fiber system, the servers having in place, the system will automatically do that. It won't require that extra hours that we are spending now for them to come in and do that work.
Is this, is this good for three to five years?
Yes, three to five years of storage.
Okay. Lot of data. Okay. Entertaining motion then that we approve the bid from CDW for twenty-nine thousand, uh, nine hundred ninety-four dollars and forty-nine cents for the police department. Would it be a motion?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor then signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Item K is consider prior- prioritizing projects for the applications for the two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty city connecting link improvement program, which is the new program from KDOT, formerly known as Clink resurfacing and geometric programs. So Sean?
We, we discussed these, uh, projects with the commission a few weeks ago. It's a new KDOT program. Our KDOT's revising their program. Uh, we did meet with some of KDOT's representatives and discuss the applications or these projects and they said, uh, they recommended that the city prioritize these three projects when they're turned in. Some other questions, we asked them. This is, this is basically, they're picking projects for fiscal year nineteen and twenty. It's unknown if, what happens after that with KDOT. So, uh, um, you know, there's, if you look, from, from my perspective, there's a number of ways to rank these projects. You could look at just your, uh, uh, capital outlay, how much you're getting done, how many blocks you're getting done for the amount of capital outlay. If you do it that way, they'll rank a certain way. If you look at, uh, equivalent uniform annual cost, they're gonna rank another way. So there's a lot of different ways we can, you could consider to rank these. Um, I, it's really, uh, I, I guess from my perspective, probably the equivalent uniform annual cost one is, is this one. Although it's the most expensive, it's gonna last the longest. The other two are really overlays.
Sean, on that one up on the screen,
Mm-hmm.
How much do we have budgeted for the cost of that lot that we're gonna be cutting into? We got just beaten last time when we did this.
Yes, and I'm going from memory here. I, I think we had about eighty thousand in right away acquisition, budgeted in that.
But we're gonna almost make that lot useless, aren't we?
Yeah, it wa- it will not. In the, your access management plan, Kate, I want you to, once those access, uh, the access to that lot removed.
So we're gonna buy the lot essentially?
Probably. I, I did look at one time, just at, at what it was appraised for at the county, I believe is around a hundred and fifty thousand.
And you budgeted how much?
What, what we budgeted was just what we, uh, a cost per square foot for what we had to buy. We budgeted around eighty. I'm going from memory,
Uh-huh.
But, but around eighty thousand, so.
I bet it cost us a hundred and fifty.
Right, right. It get very well, very well made. It may be a total take for the lot. That is correct. And I, I'm somewhat reluctant at ranking these for
Sure.
The commission because I, I just think that's, I can tell you my opinions, but this, you, you need to rank those.
Well, Sean, I'll be honest, I don't know how to do it. I mean, I know you've given us some options there, but, I mean, um, I think it probably should be based upon need. What's the, what's the greatest need?
When you look at the, the condition of the streets, uh, this block is in worse condition than the other two sections. You know, we had it patched, what, a year, year and a half ago?
Something happened.
And the patches are already failing and other, um, spots are opening up now. So, you know, I, I would think this would probably be a, a priority. You know, the question is the, the geometric, if we go back and do that or not. But when you look at what it would do for us with the, the design as it is to take traffic from one sixty to going north on seventy-five, those roads going north from that corner would wear, uh, take the traffic a lot better than going back to Sixth Street
Sixth Street.
And up to Chestnut because the asphalt is gonna start rolling at those two corners. So, you know, with the poor condition that we're seeing happen in that one block on Main Street, you know, I think this would be best so that we don't have the same impact here that we did on West Main before the corridor access management plan. Although the, the cost, uh, for property acquisition might be high, it'd be better to get this taken care of with a grant and deny a grant
What, what's
For one of the other two.
With the, with the department, with the KDOT's
Yeah.
Yeah, money. I would agree with that.
And then the West Main, um, I could see it as, as being second priority where we've got the, uh, the new street bed to the overpass. We've got the concrete on the other side. Now we're gonna have the geometric at Main and
Peter Pan.
Peter Pan. That this would, would really improve the appearance and the traffic condition on Highway seventy-five and, and one sixty through town, except for that, that one section on Ninth. Ninth and Chestnut, it is starting to show signs of, of cracking, but maybe we could do a sealer or something to extend the life, to get by and then do that third.
Yeah, I, I don't know how KDOT's going to award these, but, you know, if, if you look at the old program where it was Clink and then the geometric improvements, you, they automatically awarded the Clinks, which in, in this instance would be equivalent to your two, uh, less costly projects. They kind of automatically awarded those. And then they only awarded maybe four or five GIs in all of District Four, which is southeast Kansas. I, I, I can't say that's how they're gonna do it, but I, that's, that's, if you wanna apply the past to the future to consider how to rank them, then that's, that's what was done.
So the total city outlay for those two budget years of nineteen and twenty would be right around four hundred and thirty, four hundred and fifty thousand bucks. So one of the big projects, do, do we know how that'd work? What's history say? Do they do both, two in one year or? Cause some of that would have to do with budgets too.
Yes, they could. They could, but I suspect, I don't know, but I suspect they will just award one in each fiscal year.
Your property acquisition's not in that too, so you need to add that to your
An extra
City share.
Eighty thousand probably.
Uh.
If you got eighty in there and it's a hundred and fifty, what, you're at seventy? Was I not thinking right?
Sounds right.
I believe that's the case.
I, I don't disagree with anything you said, Leonard. Excuse me, but do we wanna bring all that heavy truck traffic right through Main Street, through our downtown and then turn them north instead of turn them north on Sixth Street?
Hmm. Not necessarily, but if we don't, then we have two highways to maintain. And I, I didn't look to see, uh, any indication of how KDOT has identified the junction. You know, if, um, at one time it was marked to go on Sixth Street north to bypass around, but, um, the condition of the road, I'm not for sure where they're going now. We talked about doing a traffic count, but with the timeframe, we're pretty short on, on that. Um, with the geometric, it would make it a lot easier to, for the, the semi-trailers to navigate town than the two corners, the three corners
Yeah.
They have to make now.
On Sixth Street.
Um, particularly at Chestnut and Penn Avenue. That's another tight corner to turn north, so.
So trucks, I mean, those that come through here all the time, you know, they just turn on Sixth Street or will we make that illegal?
I don't know how they, I haven't watched to see if they come on down to
I've seen trucks on there, but I don't know. But I don't know. That's why I'm asking.
Kelly, do you have any idea?
I would think they're going however their GPS is routing them, honestly. But, that, seriously, unless it's somebody that's used to driving through town, um, if they're just, just passing through, I mean, they're just, it's sometimes it's amazing the routes that they're routed on, but.
Really? Head up Park Street?
Yeah, the hour, over on, uh, Taylor and Twenty-first and all of that.
Or routed on the highway, probably.
Not always.
Not always?
Uh-uh.
Okay, well, well, our task tonight is to prioritize them. And, uh, I mean, we can talk a lot about this later as we get closer to it. Um, I don't have any problems with your suggestions, Leonard or Sean. I think you, basically, I think you'd agree with what Leonard was saying, wouldn't you?
Yeah, I, I would, you know, I'm looking at it just from equivalent uniform annual cost. I think that one, even though it's the most expensive, is if you boil down cost per, per year, that one is your
So that'd be concrete?
Yes.
That wouldn't be an overlay?
Yes.
It'd be very similar to what West Main is.
Correct. Correct.
Well, I'm, I'm okay with the recommendation that you have and what Sean's saying. I don't know about you, Gary.
Yeah, it seems like a lot of money for a block of pavement, but, I, I mean, I, I see what you're saying, that that's important to get the heavy traffic onto our, our highway. Only maintain one highway instead of two and the, the other route is not very good.
And the, the concrete beneath the asphalt overlay is rotten. It's gone too. So that's our, our problem that eventually the holes are gonna get bigger.
Mm-hmm.
We can patch them, but to stop them, it'll just be chasing one hole to another the longer
What about, uh, like between Penn and Ninth there on Main? Is it, is it gonna be the next step that's gonna be just as bad? We start directing more heavy traffic over it?
Penn and Ninth, yeah.
The, the traffic's going there, there now. It's hard to
But we're gonna be directing more that way, I think. At least that's gonna be our goal.
Which, Penn and, between Eighth and Penn on Main?
Coming across Main, yeah, the rest of that stretch. Is that gonna be, become more of a problem if we direct more traffic this way?
That, that stretch is, is ancient also. I mean,
Yeah, that's my concern.
It's coming. It's coming. I don't know. You know, I can't say if it's, how many years it's gonna last before it gets in the same condition we have here, but it's certainly coming.
And we still have all the traffic of one sixty going west down through Main Street.
Right.
So we have
You're right.
You know, the
I changed that in.
The ones going north are not gonna be significant compared to the ones that are already going west or east, or west to east. That traffic's gonna be constant.
So, I mean, we're still two years away and the way state funding's going will
Yeah, they may not fund any of them.
They may not fund any of them. And so, so the pri- we're prioritizing for what reason, Sean? Do they
Just KDOT recommended that, that when you return in the application, if we have more than one project selected, which is fine with them, we just rank them in a priority.
So the ranking then, how we rank these then could possibly affect how we're awarded the project?
Yes.
Any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean, that's, when I was talking about the Clink, um, you know, probably getting a higher priority on the resurfacing, that, that would be a reason to pick one of those others first and put this one second.
Wait, say that once more, I'm sorry.
Well, can you clarify with the application that bring out or submit photographs of that one block saying the reason that the geometric is looking at priority is because of the condition and how it's affected Highway one sixty?
Yes, and they, they, we can, you, we can send in anything we want with the application. Also, they will come to Independence and visit the site and
Okay.
So the commission or whoever is welcome to go meet them on site and, and discuss, uh, discuss the projects on site as well. What I, what I was saying on the resurfacing in, in their old program, they had Clink, uh, which was a mill and overlays. Those are automatic. You applied or virtually automatic. You applied, you got it. And then they awarded about six of these GI projects out of twenty or thirty applications. So that's what I'm saying. I, I don't know, but it may be, it may be a good idea, right? It may be a good idea to pick, pick one of those resurfacing projects. That's number one and then this one is number two.
So if we had to pick one, would, would we pick West Main?
Yeah.
Kind of what I'm thinking. So would you agree, Gary?
Yeah, I think so.
West Main? So we, I guess our ranking, we don't really need to make a motion on this, do we, or do we?
You probably should.
We should? Well, then, um, for further discussion, then, we do the West Main project first, then the GI program next, followed by the Chestnut. Is that, is that the way you see it?
Yeah.
Sean, is that the way you see it?
Yeah, that, I think that would, with some strategy on the grants, if, if, I'm guessing, but.
Trying to outthink the state.
Right.
Good luck.
Yeah, good luck, yeah.
Right.
Well, then I think that's, let's, if we're good with that, let's
Yeah, I had, I had ranked
I think it's preliminary and we'll find out more as we go ahead.
Right. And they will come at some point to Independence. You'll all be notified and you'll be able to meet with them if you'd like.
Okay. All right. So then I'd make a motion that we, uh, prioritize the CLIP, I guess, is that how you say it? Cli- CCLIP program and the GI program as West Main is our first priority from eighth to tenth?
Ninth to tenth. There's an arrow on it.
Okay, ninth to tenth, okay?
Wait, that's
Wait a minute, that's wrong one.
Yeah.
Yeah. West Main from Peter Pan West to the city limits, okay? Second priority would be the West Main project from ninth to tenth, okay? And then the Chestnut project from Chestnut And then the Chestnut project from Chestnut, Penn to ninth, from Penn to ninth. That would be a motion.
I'll second.
Did you get that, Michael?
Uh-huh.
Okay. If not, we got a video. Okay, been moved, seconded?
Uh, Gary's seconded.
Gary's seconded, okay. Oh, that's been moved and seconded, and then we prioritize the projects. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, ready to move on to Item L, which is Report on City Projects and Other Updates.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you, Sean. Sales tax reports first.
Better than last month.
Let's see, we'd be about eighteen hundred dollars higher, sixteen hundred dollars higher than last February, but still down a little bit for the year.
Yeah, there was just less than a one percent gain year over year from the same period in 2016. However, it was nineteen point three four month over month in 2017. So as, as noted earlier in visiting with Amanda, it's the first time that we've been at this level. Outside of, there were some anomalies there in 2014, had all the pipe layers in here, so they drove in some additional income. But to see that, that type of activity at these levels, you have to go back to 2013.
Okay. All right, questions?
Now, this would have been receipts from December or January?
December.
December.
So it'd be Christmas.
So the Christmas.
So people shop local.
That's right, so I, I think that looks good.
That's what that means, that people shop locally, which we thank, we're thankful for.
Yeah, that's great.
Very thankful for. Okay? All right, other...
No more questions?
No question. ISO report? Are you gonna do, who's doing that one?
David.
Just to reiterate from last first Friday, Mayor, twenty twelve, we were a five. We consolidated Fire Department in July first of that year. We asked ISO to come back in after we trained everybody. And in May of 2013, we went to a four. This past fall, Rusty Baker, previous retired fire chief, and I sat down with Terry Laerberger and ISO. Oh, we've probably spent about, she was here probably for two or three days, working with us, going, doing another evaluation. And then Terry extensively, after we looked at some of the hydrant reports, spent quite a bit of time with ISO, and they did all of their data, and then we just received this last week, a rating of two. And we're very pleased with all of that, that, all of our aspects. And I left out the Police Department and everything that they do in our nine-one-one system, and great kudos go there, too, that took us to a two.
You know, this detailed report that was in our packet?
Yes.
A lot of it, we nailed it, a lot of the categories. You know, it's thirty points possible, we got twenty-eight, or Fire, Public Fire Safety Educators Qualification and Training, credit available ten, we got ten.
Yeah.
It's sort of interesting on some of them, though, like Fire Prevention Certification and Training, credit available six, we got zero.
Right, and those, what, what's kind of neat about that, Mayor, is as Sean and I sat down with this, and these were some of the areas that we knew we were lacking in, that we now can take that report...
Yeah, that's wonderful.
And just go forward, you know, getting into the inspection process we were low in, and so...
Yeah, it seems like it could be sort of a blueprint also.
Yes, exactly, and Chief Wallace is on it, and Chief Harrison also, as we look at, see how we can improve and keep going forward.
So the reduction in that factor from four to two, then, the benefit is...
The benefit is residential is basically talk, Sean's spent a lot of time with the State Insurance Commissioner on this. One to eight, anything under an eight doesn't really affect residence. This affects the commercial and your business properties, and there's some other things, too, that they've given to us, that we still, as staff, need to evaluate. Other programs we can do that can even help more, but we just need to look at that, cause it has potentially some requirements that would be pretty strict. But we urge all business and commercial properties to speak to their insurance companies. Not all insurance companies pay, utilize the ISO ratings, but a lot do, and there should be some savings.
Yeah, this is great news.
That's good news.
It's really exciting.
Questions?
No.
Gary, any further questions?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, thank you, David. All right, Hometown Showdown, then. I know we made past the first preliminary.
Yeah, we've made it past the wild card round, and then last week, we beat Lewisburg, and now we're up against Humboldt. So, that started today, and so that will go on until the twelfth, and hopefully, we can get past this round, and this is the picture, and since our lovely projector's not working well, that's actually orange, so...
Looks good here.
Yeah.
Looks beautiful.
So, and, and I checked before the meeting, and we're currently beating Humboldt right now, so hopefully, we'll keep it up.
Okay. Very good. All right, questions or comments on that, Brian?
No.
Okay.
And they could go to the city Facebook page, the link's on there, and then like Independence's picture of the fountain.
I know, a couple of years ago, we had a bunch of people get together and start a voting, like voting parties and that kind of stuff. Maybe that would be a way to get us in, get us down the road there, too.
Are you gonna host that?
No. We went someplace.
Yes.
We did, okay. All right, all right, City Board Minutes. Any questions from commissioners on the City Board Minutes?
No.
No.
Okay. All right, then, Commission Comments. Leonard, any comments?
No.
Gary, any comments?
I do, actually, I have a couple. I don't really want to get into a long discussion about this tonight, but I would like to raise the question and possibly talk about it in the future. Somebody contacted me this week, said they were starting a new business downtown, and, you know, they're not gonna generate a lot of trash, but they're gonna generate some. They want to have a trash can, and they were told they had to go buy their own dumpster. It was two hundred and fifty dollars or something like that, and they said, you know, why can't the city own some dumpsters and rent it to me for ten dollars or twenty dollars a month, or, cause I don't, I don't want to go spend two hundred and fifty dollars for a dumpster? And I, I said, I have no idea, but that seems like a good question to, to raise, because, you know, this, we want to make it easy for people to start businesses downtown, and, you know, the cities wouldn't necessarily lose money off it, I mean, cause they could charge rent on the dumpster, I'm thinking. So I'm just wondering about if future meeting, have that as an item of discussion, why we do it exactly the way we do, and whether there's some room for improvement there.
Yeah, I know there's a lot of maintenance on those dumpsters, and...
I'm sure.
There, I know the wheels and the lids, I know we're constantly having issues, or the bottom rusts out, but yeah.
Yeah, I know a lot of them are in terrible condition, but, but maybe they'd be better if the city owned them. Maybe they'd be better, I don't know.
Okay.
Anyway...
Might be interesting to see what others, what other communities do.
Yeah, anything we can do to encourage a downtown business, I'd like to do.
It's not a unique issue here.
Right. The other one that somebody brought up the other night at the Main Street Org, Meeting, fundraiser, they said that Main Street might like to fund some of our signs. When we had the signs designed by Indigo Designs, I don't know what, a year ago or two years ago, after Roger Brooks was here, he came up with a sign plan...
Yes.
And as I remember, it was three hundred thousand dollars or something, and so we just said, obviously, we're not doing that. But somebody said, you know, if we wanted to spend some money to put up some signs downtown, could we do it? Could we, you know, follow the plan that he came up with to put up signs? And I had to say, I don't know. I, I don't think we ever really discussed that possibility, but I'd, I'd love to give them an opportunity to. If we, if we finalized a signed design, and then they can put up signs to, to meet the plan, that seems like...
Well, and we can install the signs, and also with the Fab Lab, some of the signs may be able to be made here, rather, you know, a lot of that cost was having those made.
Right.
And...
But if we've got somebody wanting to put some up to, and saying, we'll follow whatever design you guys came up with, and I think maybe we should finalize or formalize that, that process for somebody to do that. I'd just like to maybe put that on...
You want to put that on a future agenda?
I would like to do that.
The sign plan?
Yeah, I think so. Makes a lot of sense.
In that process, there were, there was a design that was approved, right?
Yeah. Well, he presented us a design. He presented us a di, a design, but I don't remember ever approving it as, this is our design.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it was actually approved.
Some of it was like, pretty conceptual.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
And it had maps showing where the signs would be located, and, and there, there were some at the park as well, as, as well as around town, Wayfinder signs.
Exactly.
Well, for Main Street, they'd probably be interested, something around downtown, and...
That'd be my guess.
That'd be a good, good start.
Yeah.
Depending on what type of sign they're interested in, maybe take the last presentation to Main Street and let them have, you know, a printout of where we were, and get their input on where they, what they were thinking about. One of it was like a, a kiosk, wasn't it?
Yeah.
So, you know, something like that, but it would be good if we could get a, copies for us three to look at and then one for them.
Do you want to put it on the next agenda, and you guys can look over it again and see if you want to actually approve it?
I'd like to see that.
Would you like to do that?
I think if we had copies to refresh our memory first, and then look at it, and then get input, because I don't remember how formal it was.
It's not real long, I don't think. It just had some concepts, there were some maps showing where they'd be located, and then there was some cost, estimated cost, and it was based on 2015 numbers, so I don't know how much, that might be a little different now. But again, that was having them made, some, you know, by a contractor.
Maybe Main Street would, once they see what we were talking about, then get where they're interested in focusing, you know?
See what the possibilities are.
Yeah, the kiosk idea, or something around downtown would...
Well, and if they made the signs, our staff could actually install them, so...
Okay.
That's all I had, Mr. Ray.
That was all you had, okay? Thought I'd provide a quick update for, on the city manager search. Through last Friday, which was March third, that was the final date to receive applications. We received forty-nine total applications. Nikki Harrison is our consultant. She emailed me this morning, cause I asked her how we were doing with the rankings, and she said she's about halfway through the resumes and has already seen several good candidates. So that's very positive. As a commission, we're gonna have to set a time here, and I had suggested to her in an email, that we look at sometime next week, late next week, maybe Friday, probably need to set aside a couple hours, not a good Friday, not a good Fri, not a good Friday, literally, but, huh? Next Friday?
Is that, that's the pub crawl, or?
We'll do it in the morning, then.
Do it during the pub crawl.
Okay. Maybe that's not a good day. We could do it maybe some, the following week, Monday or Tuesday, the following week or something. But we need to be thinking about a time.
Yeah, sooner the better, I think.
Yeah, and she will complete what they call a profile book, a candidate profile book, and then, you know, then we need probably a couple hours to sit down and work with her and go through the interview process, that type of thing, so.
Great.
Moving right along, really pleased to receive forty-nine applications, and hopefully, we're on target. We'll see how this all proceeds, so I'm really pleased with forty-nine apps. That's very good. Okay. After that, now then, no more further Commission comments, then now it's time for public comments, and Debbie Miller has another comment again, so. This one's on Mickey Webb's evaluation form.
Mm-hmm.
Whenever you're ready.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, there we go. Not five.
I don't know if you're able to read it.
I could read slower.
There we go.
There you go, sorry.
Oh, wait, I, I wasn't ready.
Oh, sorry. I was so busy. I thought you were pointing at me, I'm sorry.
No, I was thinking about that five.
You needed a few more seconds.
Okay. Okay. In May 2016, I filed a Kansas Open Records Act complaint when the city refused to provide me a blank copy of Mickey Webb's evaluation form. Subsequently, during two different commission meetings, the city inferred I received information about that form from an executive session. After the city's first inference, I was contacted by a member of the media, asking me to comment on it. In an effort to restore my reputation and to respond to the city's suggestion that I had unethically gained information from an executive session, I would like to offer the following. First, like most employees, I had job evaluations wherever I had worked. I had also been told that all city employees were being evaluated. Therefore, I made the logical assumption that Mickey Webb, as an employee, was most likely being evaluated. Secondly, throughout most of my working career, I supervised and evaluated individuals ranging from children to adults in both the public and private sectors. I developed evaluative tools based on research and the expectations associated with the subject of the evaluation. Lastly, as I worked on my master's thesis, much of the literature I reviewed as part of my research involved evaluations and evaluative tools. Despite what the city may have cooked up, I absolutely did not have to rely on information from an executive session to form intelligent opinions and questions about Mickey Webb's evaluation form. The city's inferences that I did so were absolute, absolute lies. So why did I ask for the form when I did? At the March twenty-fourth, 2016 commission meeting, taxpayers learned that water facilities needed three million dollars in updates because Mickey Webb had failed to maintain them. I once again wondered how in the hell he kept his job. I also decided that either the commissioners were not evaluating him, or the tool with which they were evaluating him was ineffective, or they did not place the same values as I did on items such as planning, maintaining city assets and infrastructure, and spending tax dollars wisely. Therefore, on April first, 2016, I made a core request for a blank copy of Mickey Webb's evaluation form to determine if such a form existed, and if so, upon what criteria he was being evaluated. Rather than wasting time paid for by taxpayers to propagate their nonsensical theory about me infiltrating an executive session, city staff's time could have been better spent reviewing the Kansas Open Records Act to avoid further complaints and fees, or the Kansas Open Meetings Act, so they could advise commissioners on how to properly adjourn to executive sessions. It's inexplicable why the city twice made unsubstantiated inferences that misled the public, defamed me, and violated my civil rights. It's inexplicable, it's unethical, and it's shameful, but hopefully, it will change. Thank you.
We have a couple of executive sessions this evening. One will be attorney-client privilege. That'll be with Kelly...
And Jeff.
Jeff, and the three commissioners. How long do we need?
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes? And then, after we come back, then we'll have a non-elected executive session for about five minutes, okay? All right, so I'd make a motion then that we go into executive session for the purposes of attorney-client privilege for ten minutes.
Second.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're back in open session. I'd like to make a motion then that we go into executive session for non-elected personnel for five minutes. Three commissioners will be a part of that, and that's it.
My second.
All those in favor then signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We'll be back in five minutes. We're back in open session. Will be no action taken before I entertain a motion then to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And signing the papers and going home.
So who's second on that?